All right, I'll call this meeting to get, uh, the City Edgewater special budget on July 18th, 2022.
The workshop.
Pardon me?
Workshop.
Workshop. Please stand before the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for silent prayer or a moment of silence, whatever you prefer. Thank you, roll call.
Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilwoman Power?
Here.
Councilwoman Bennington?
Here.
Councilwoman Delbo?
Here.
Councilman Powers?
Here.
City Manager Erby?
Here.
City Clerk Latnick present.
Oh, we'll hand it over to you, sir. Then we'll give it to Bridget. That's fine.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you all for being here this afternoon. I appreciate your time very much. I do want to start off the budget workshop as I have tried for the various workshops in saying a huge, huge thank you for all of Team Edgewater. The directors here to my right are an integral part of the budget process. Jim here in accounting and my entire finance staff helped to put this together and make it happen, so I just wanted to say a huge thank you to the whole group that puts it together.
We appreciate that, too.
So, this afternoon, we are going to be reviewing the proposed governmental funds budget, a discussion of the proposed millage, as well as the important dates for the truth and millage or TRIM process. The TRIM process is pretty complex. We'll keep you the short version this evening. Florida statute 200.065 requires that we do all sorts of advertisements, public hearings and so forth, full transparency and truth and millage. On the July 25th council meeting next Monday evening, we will be back before you to set or ask for a motion for setting the proposed millage that will be advertised on the truth and millage advertisement that gets sent out by the property appraiser. And so, keeping in mind that that would be the maximum millage that you would set, could be reduced between now and the final budget process, but in order for us to advertise that amount, you would not be able to increase it without an act of Congress. There's many, many additional steps. Also, what will be included on the TRIM notice this year includes the fire assessment. So, just a couple of points. General fund budget for the fiscal year 23 budget that is proposed before you is based on a 6.7 millage rate, which is our current operating millage rate. Also note that the fire assessment that was presented previously to council, we are looking at a $50 per resident fire assessment fee. And then, for non-residential property use categories, there is a rate per square foot as listed here on slide five. That's three cents per square foot for commercial, one cent per square foot industrial warehouse, and five cent per square foot for institutional, and these are capped at 97,000 square foot. Operating ad valorem, so the property taxes make up an integral part of the general fund funding source. Property taxes include probably 40 to 60% of the general fund's funding sources for operations. The preliminary taxable value currently, um, 1,486, 1,486,723,625. At a rollback rate of 5.9038 per thousand of taxable value at 95%, it would produce an estimated proceeds of $8,338,453. At the current millage rate of 6.7 per 1,000 of taxable value, at 95% would produce an estimated proceeds of $9,462,996. If adopted at the rollback rate, the budget would need to be adjusted by 1.1 million. If adopted at 6.2, the budget would need to be adjusted by 706,194. The millage of 6.7 is a changeover rollback of 13.49%. So, one of the things that we like to do each year is to kind of give you an example of a couple of homes that are typical in the city of Edgewater. An average home that would be assessed at 133,457, assuming that it has the homestead exemption, Save Our Homes, would increase a 3% because that is the maximum. If it was increased to 137,460, it would see an impact on this 6.7 proposed millage of approximately $26.82 for the city's portion of the tax. So, the next few slides here, we give you two example homes, one in a gated community, one in Florida shores. So, on this slide, you will see a homeowner that is in a gated community. This particular property assessed value at $128,758. It's assumed 50,000 worth of homestead exemptions. At the assumed 6.7 city operating and .1930 mills for city voter-approved debt service, prior year millage rates comparatively, you would see Edgewater increase of $23.20. And then, we also provide that comparative of 10 years prior. So, in 2013, their total tax bill was at $1,696.76, a total increase over the past 10 years On this example here, this is the Florida shores home example. It represents an assessed value of $93,939, 50,000 worth of homestead exemptions. So, assuming the 6.7 millage rate and .1930 mills for voter-approved debt service, it would see an increase of $17.40. And again, the 10-year comparative, in 2013, this particular home paid $947.44 in taxes, an overall increase of $99. So, again, going back to the earlier statement, taxes make up a great portion of the general fund revenue sources. And so, you're looking at 61% total taxes, which includes sales tax, there's a handful, but majority is property tax. You have license permits, intergovernmental revenue, which consists of state shared revenues, grants, those types of funding sources. For fiscal year 2023, the general fund revenues, again, the taxable value preliminary increase of 17.78%. New construction and annexations consisted of $52,716,923 worth of value. So, the total taxable value of $1,486,723,625. Some of the major highlights of the general fund revenue changes over the current year operating budget include property tax revenues increasing by 1.4 million, estimated addition of fire assessment, $565,508, estimated increase in half-cent sales tax, $242,000, increase in municipal revenue share, $140,000, local option gas tax, $64,600, the communication service tax, $41,000, utility tax for FPL, $39,000, increased in building permit fees of $51,000. And then, you'll note a big negative that's offsetting some of these revenues. In our current operating budget, we had proposed use of reserves, quite a sizable amount, so we're actually using or proposing to use $2.9 million less of reserves in this proposed budget before you. So, all in all, these items total up to 338,000 decrease. The net, the net change in revenues for the general fund was less than 200,000 for net change, so to kind of put that in perspective. For fiscal year 23 proposed budget before you, majority of the general fund departments show slight increases in budget related to the proposed wage increases and inflationary impact to operations. After conservative spending the last few years, COVID-19, multiple hurricanes, Matthew, Irma, so forth, we had built up some reserves. So, again, in fiscal year 22, we have in our current year budget use of reserves, and we are also proposing to use reserves in the fiscal year 23 budget, and that I'll have the amount in just a few minutes for you. The increase in the currently proposed budget for general fund is just over a million dollars, and keeping in mind, I have later discussion that this currently has programmed in a 5% potential increase in wages for employees. The unions are still in negotiations, so that is still in the works, but this is what is in the proposed budget at this moment in time. Throughout the budget, there are some decreases that are offsetting some of the increases. We have a decrease in capital equipment and project transfers of 826,000. A decrease, excuse me, a decrease in transfers to the information technology fund for radio replacement was the biggest portion of that. In current year, we were looking to replace most of the radios in order to be compliant and compatible with the new systems going forward, so that would be the major decrease there, the 227,000. A decrease in debt service of approximately 120,000, so we did pay off one of the loans this year, so. Fiscal year 23 general fund expenditures, this chart is very, very evident. Most of the general fund operating expenses relate to employees. So, you know, again, kudos to all the departments, Julie and HR helping with the employee side of the budget because it makes up such an integral part of our operating expenses. And this chart here just kind of gives you an idea of breakdown by department. Public safety is one of the biggest portions of the general fund operating. You'll also see a pretty sizable percentage for other governmental services. That includes transfers to, say, the capital projects, to the internal service funds, so multiple things that make up those numbers there. So, now, we want to go through some of the staffing, capital, capital projects. Throughout the budget process, you know, all of the directors, management met, certain items were included in the proposed budget, and there were various items that we did not include, but we thought, you know, full transparency, we wanted to let you know what was originally requested by the various departments. So, the staff that is currently included in the fiscal year 23 proposed budget includes three firefighter EMTs that are budgeted for an entire fiscal year at $219,480. There are three driver engineers that are budgeted for a half of the fiscal year at And we also have a code enforcement supervisor for half of the fiscal year programmed at $38,000. So, the total included for the fiscal year 23 proposed budget is $378,741. Some of the, excuse me, some of the staffing that was requested but not included in our proposed budget this evening includes a human resources clerk, finance clerk one, four police officers, three firefighter paramedics, two public works specialized heavy equipment operators, two public works maintenance workers. So, grand total that was not included but originally requested, $890,529. In the fiscal year 2023 for capital outlay, the general fund capital currently includes an ambulance for $375,000, public works bucket truck, $275,000, a police department patrol interceptor for $63,415, a pickup truck for code enforcement, $40,000, Parks and Rec diesel heavy-duty utility vehicle for $15,000. There is an estimated possible trade-in for that vehicle, so it could be potentially offset by $3,800. Parks and Rec three-quarter ton truck, possible trade-in of $7,000, currently budgeted at $26,000. Parks and Rec ride-on sprayer spreader for $14,967, Parks and Rec Toro ground master, $3,500, possible trade-in of 10K, current budget of $40,000. The aluminum landscape dump body, instead of getting an entire vehicle, they believe that they can work with the equipment as-is and just replace the dump body for $18,000. So, currently, in the general fund, we have programmed in $867,382 of capital outlay needs.
I have a question. Is the Toro ground master, is that a lawnmower?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks.
So, a handful of items that were not included in the capital outlay in the fiscal year 23 proposed, police department, three patrol interceptors, those related specifically to the new officers being requested, police department, two patrol interceptors, Parks and Rec, two diesel heavy-duty utility vehicles, possible trade-ins for those as well, and then Parks and Rec, two three-quarter ton pickup trucks, possible trade-in of 14. So, the grand total budgeted, or, excuse me, not included in the fiscal year 23 budget So, another thing that we do throughout the budget process each year is we're looking at, you know, what are our cash balances, what are our reserve levels, is there potential for use of reserves that are in place? So, as of 9/30/21, the unassigned fund balance was 8.5 million. The charter reserves at a 15% minimum would be 3.2 million. The additional amount that was carried forward to the fiscal year 22 budget was 578,293. We're currently proposing to use in the fiscal year 23 budget, $1,079,235. This would leave an unassigned fund balance remaining of 6.9 million. This represents 32% of the proposed general fund operating budget. Again, you know, 15% of the general fund required minimum per our charter, depending on location, you know, management and so forth, 17% is, 17% to 25, 35% depending on the city and so forth. The designated city hall balance is $639,133 as of September 31st or September 30th. Just a few things to note as we're going through and reviewing the charter reserves, we're looking at, you know, being a coastal community, hurricane season, we have city hall needs going on in the moment, we're looking into analyzing various items there. We're looking at temporary needs and other, other equipment costs, so there's always things that could crop up. Special revenue funds. So, special revenue funds, keeping in mind, these are restricted funds. They are used for very specific purposes, most of which are legally restricted to those purposes, and so, we actually track them in separate funds to make sure that we're fully accountable and able to differentiate these funds. The special law enforcement trust fund has estimated available $45,000, currently under review by staff for potential uses. Transportation impact fees estimated, estimated available 1.6 million, again, projects being reviewed by staff. Currently, these handful do not have programmed in projects into the fiscal year 23 budget. You know, again, there are various projects that crop up that then we go and amend the budget for. Police impact fees estimated available $240,000, fire impact fees estimated available $90,000, recreation impact fees estimated available $320,000. And the recreation impact fees, we actually have identified use for $170,239 towards the YMCA pickleball courts, that is for engineering design and engineering design cost. The whistle-stop fencing along the Florida East Coast Railroad property line of $30,000. Within the scholarship fund, we're estimating approximately $3,000 that we can carry forward to next year, and we are looking to raise approximately $6,000 in donations and fundraisers. So, that would, that would provide for approximately $9,000 that would be distributed for scholarships. Within the tree mitigation fund, there is $69,800 available. We have $30,000 earmarked for a FDEP grant match for use at the Veterans Park. The Edgewater CRA or Community Redevelopment Agency currently has $444,834. Wayfinding signs of $20,000, facade grants for $200,000, entryway sign at 10th and US1 for $50,000, capital projects that are being reviewed by staff of $174,834. Debt service for the governmental funds, tried to detail out outstanding obligations. We currently have a 2005 animal shelter obligation that is supported by a voter-approved debt millage. So, for the estimated millage that is included in this budget is a 0.0248, and then that would cover the cost of the upcoming year's principal and interest payments. Outstanding total balance of $135,000 on that particular note. The 2017 Gopher Parks has 2.6 million outstanding. It is voter-approved debt service, estimated millage for paying the principal and interest in the coming budget is programmed at 0.1682. The 2017 park land acquisition, general obligation debt, general fund, has an outstanding 1.4 million and the principal and debt service of $127,000 and $34,000 respectively. Additional outstanding debt for the governmental funds, we have the Fire Station 55, we have the capital note 2014 for the fire pumper, we have the vehicle lease 2019. So, the total governmental debt that is outstanding at this moment is $5,170,000. For capital projects, again, we have some projects that were requested and included and some that we have not included for the fiscal year 23 proposed. On this particular slide, you will see what was included. We have paving projects of $628,000, of which $228,000 would be funded by LOGT or local option gas tax. The additional funding comes from general fund transfers. Sidewalk replacements of $150,000, animal shelter building expansion at $150,000, but it's my understanding that we are currently looking at a grant, so that is a hopeful funding source there. The police department, a 36-by-240 pole barn to be placed at the training facility range out, $42,000. YMCA playground, playground replacement, $200,000. Whistle-stop fencing along the Florida East Coast Railway for recreation impact fee funding, $30,000. The entryway sign at I-95 and State Road 442, $50,000. Veterans Park green infrastructure, it's partially grant-funded and then partially city-match using that tree mitigation, $30,000. So, that particular project is estimated currently at $137,500. And then, the YMCA pickleball courts, impact fee funded at $170,000. So, total projects currently included in the 23 proposed budget, $1,557,739. Some of the projects that were not included in the upcoming budget, additional paving of 1.4 million, the ribbon curb projects of $930,000. We had a police department 12-by-12 aluminum building, training facility at the training facility and range for $21,000. Rotary Park walkway for $65,000. The YMCA playground replacement at $200,000. The Hawks Park fence replacement and repairs, $100,000. Hawks Park walkway lighting, and I need to confirm the YMCA playground, I just realized I've got it on. Does it stay or does it go? I apologize. Let me confirm that in just a second here. The Hawks Park fence replacement and repairs at $100,000. Hawks Park Bridge, $35,000. Whalerway boat ramp engineering and design, so total of 3.2 million. And again, I apologize, give me just one second here. YMCA 200,000 replacement was left in the fiscal year 23 proposed, so I apologize, I probably duplicated the slide and...
It is included?
It is included.
Okay.
So, I apologize for that. So, capital projects, not included, $3,43,000.
I'm almost there. So, it's 3, 3,43,000.
The internal service funds are funds that provide services to all the funds, governmental and proprietary in nature. Our information technology fund currently budgeted at $890,000. The fleet fund at 1.7 million. Property liability fund, $420,000. Health insurance at $3,419,000. In the information technology fund fiscal year 23, capital outlay that is included, we have desktop computer replacements for $20,000, fire department replacement laptops, $15,000, fire department server replacement, $10,000, Parks and Rec server replacement, $10,000, police department drone, $17,000, a camera NVR replacement, which is the recording and storage for the camera system, $32,000, camera repair at the water plant for $17,000, and camera repair at the Kennedy Park for $9,000, so a total of $130,000 of capital outlay within the information technology fund. Citywide debt, currently, there is 5.1 million in governmental funds as discussed earlier. Enterprise funds has outstanding $13,691,000, and internal service has $22,581. Total citywide debt, $18,884,609. So, when discussing the millage, again, the fiscal year 23 budget is proposed based on 6.7 millage. If any additional items were to be added, we would need to remove something from the budget to cover it. We could increase the millage rate, or we would be using reserves up to the one-time capital outlay. We always want to make sure that we're mindful and make note best practices. When you're using reserves, you're typically using those for one-time outlay. You try not to balance a budget, ongoing operations with ongoing cost. You want the ongoing revenues to cover those. The next slide actually includes a sample of incremental increases and decreases related to the millage. So, it's pretty small on the big screen, but we did quarter... So it's pretty small on the big screen, but we did quarter, quarter increment millage decrease and increases. To kind of give you an idea of what the fluctuation of potential revenue would be for the general fund if we made any changes to that. And then, in summary, the proposed budget is based on the six point seven operating millage taxable value. One billion, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three, six hundred and twenty-five. The combined millage for the voter debt service would be zero point one nine three zero. This is also based on the fire assessment, fifty dollars for residential and then the various increments for industrial, commercial. Citywide balanced budget currently before you is sixty-two million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. General fund portion, twenty-two million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven ninety-one. Special revenues at six hundred and eighty-four thousand, seventy-three dollars. The debt service, four hundred and thirty-five, two oh five. Capital projects of one point five million. Enterprise funds, thirty million, nine hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and one. The internal service funds at six million, seven hundred and eighty-three, seven twenty-seven. I wanted to remind of some upcoming very important dates and then I'm going to open up for, I'm sure there may be questions. Budget workshops and public hearing dates. We will be back before you again, as I mentioned earlier, next Monday evening at six o'clock to set the proposed millage. That will be advertised on the trim notice. The August twenty-fourth workshop at four thirty, thirty, as needed. Between now and then, there may be budget changes that you will need informed of. The two public hearings in September, first public hearing, September twelfth at six P M. This meeting will also include the final fire assessment, approval of that. And then at the second public hearing in September, we would approve the final millage and final operating budget. So I will open it up for any questions you may have.
I might kind of go all over the place, so bear with me. I just have a lot of.
Yeah, I've got pages.
Yeah, I just, it's in no particular order, it's just how, how I was processing it. I first just have a request and if I'm unreasonable, tell me no. But at the next meeting, I didn't know if we could see, we're looking at. If we were to look at a six point two millage rate, that would be a decrease of seven hundred and six thousand, one ninety-four. Is there any way that we could see a decrease or a breakout of what that would look like by next week or is that too soon?
As far as what we would.
What would have to be taken out?
What would have to be taken out? So I will defer to the city manager, Erby.
Short answer to that is nothing. There would be a use of reserves.
Oh, okay.
In addition to the, about a million of reserves, so it'd be.
Yes.
In addition to that.
But you also be, have to be mindful of the fact that we're still in negotiations with the unions. We're all very concerned as to where that's going to go.
Okay.
So there's going to be more. I'm just, I'm, we're still in negotiations, so I'm not at liberty to really say anything.
When will those negotiations be complete?
This week.
So we'll know by Monday, kind of what's going on?
Yes. That's, that's correct, right? Sorry.
Okay, well.
One week from brother.
Okay. Okay, I'll just keep an eye on it then, I mean, I just.
So the, so the five, the five percentage is a stab in the dark.
At this point, yes.
At this point, five percent increase for the.
Right.
Staff.
Right. Okay. Fee schedule. This is kind of going off a little off topic. Can we eva, can we look at that, the fee schedule, especially like development services, what we charge for annexations over certain acreages? Like P U D charges, those sort of things, can we, can we take a look at that?
That'll actually be on the August first agenda.
That'll be on the August first agenda.
I'm going to.
Okay. Police department. Public safety is a concern. So how many positions were added the fiscal year that we're currently in?
In current fiscal year? I do not know.
That's okay, I just.
Additional positions.
That's okay.
And also if there are any openings that we did not fill.
Are we staffed, police? Do you have any open positions? You have three open, okay.
Didn't we just hire four officers? Oh, I thought you did.
I get you guys use the microphones, please.
Sorry. So you just hired two and there's, how many positions open, three?
We have three open.
Okay.
We have two in training.
Okay.
I believe last fiscal year, I don't think we added a position, I think it was the year prior.
Okay.
Part of that.
Fire chief, how are you looking?
If this is approved, real well.
Okay, okay, okay. I think that kind of covers it, I know it's a little random. The breakdown of the impact fee budgets. Do we get that periodically as we amend the budget or do we, will we get that before we approve the budget in, in September?
So typically, again, those are all legally restricted funds.
Right, yeah.
So until there is a project.
That's identified.
That is identified, right, that we can actually use those for. So at this moment in time, going back to the slide that had the special revenue funds. We did include, you know, those items that were identified and then those that just said estimated available. Projects have not been identified at this moment in time.
So we, so we get that period, we get that as projects are identified?
Yeah.
That comes back, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry to disappoint you.
I'll come back. Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got, yes.
Go ahead.
I've marked my pages.
Go ahead.
All right, so page six.
Yes ma'am.
Millage is six point seven is a change of rollback of thirteen four, thirteen point four nine percent. That includes the fire fee, that's all in.
So the current budget before you, so the, the calculation over rollback does not incorporate the fire fee, it's a separate calculation. So that is strictly calculated based on the ad valorem. So that is something that we are legally required to advertise. So when we're going to advertise and then publishing for the, the public hearings. We're, we're indicating how much of an increase over rollback rate and what they do is the rollback rate. Is the rate that would be levied, that would bring in a comparable amount of revenue. It's not, it's a pretty complex calculation because it also includes. It excludes the new annexations, it includes a calculation over T I F. So there's a handful of variables that go into it, but then we, we say, okay, well, this would be the increase over a prior year, if you will.
Okay. It doesn't really.
Does that?
Yeah.
So, but then, okay, but going back to your original question, the fire assessment is included in the proposed budget as that additional revenue?
Right.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. That's what I was asking, example home. So example home, same page. With an assessed value of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, four fifty-seven with increase in assessed value to one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Would see an impact of twenty-six dollars and eighty-two cents at current rate of six point seven. Does that include the fifty dollar fee? It does not.
That does not.
Okay.
Good point, so.
Okay. So then basically it would be seventy-six.
Correct.
Including the fire services fee.
Correct, so the total fee that would be collected on the upcoming, very, very good.
At six point seven?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I just, I'm trying to be transparent.
Transparent, yes ma'am.
Okay, right, hang on. I think you've pretty much answered this one, the thirteenth, page thirteen, the, the million dollars in increase of employee salary and benefits. And benefits, that was the five percent, that was including the five percent.
Yes ma'am.
Increase, okay. So that may or may not go up from there or down depending on the.
I cannot speak to that.
Negotiating skills. Okay. Page fourteen, salaries and benefits, sixty-four point three two percent of the budget. And this actually might be an H R question, is that, what, what is the percentage increase factored in for medical insurance?
I factored in ten percent, that's just a projection.
Okay. Is that, is that where we were at last year? I feel like we were a little bit less than that, I thought.
A lot less.
Yeah.
Last year, I think I projected eight percent.
Okay, okay.
And the increase was how much?
Zero.
Right. So there was, there was a savings there and I'm not sure they're going to come back with that same thing this time, although it would be lovely, right? Because, so that, that again would almost be bound money, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Page sixteen. So that's the, this is a Jeff question, this is Chief Larissy question, sorry. So that's staff included in the budget is, that's the six firefighters that you were looking for. And then you said the other day that it would be, you know, nine, but really you only needed six right now, correct?
The idea is to stagger the hiring so we can bring them up to speed and, and actually put another ambulance on the road.
Right, okay, so, okay, and that's part of that. So the two hundred and nineteen thousand for those three firefighter slash E M Ts, part of that two hundred and nineteen thousand could be. Partly paid for by fire assessment fee? A portion of that, the firefighting portion of those three people?
Yes ma'am, so the, the fire assessment as proposed before you is to cover the fire operations. So currently it's three point five approximately in the fire operations budget. This is included in the fire operation, so it would offset some of those.
Okay. So some of that would be coming from that, all right. Page seventeen. So again, those, the three firefighters and that was above and beyond what? So I'm kind of, I'm writing that off, Jeff, I'm just telling you.
So next year this time?
Yeah.
I'll be trying to convince the manager to add the three firefighters.
Right, right, so I'm just, I'm taking it off of my unfunded, I'm not counting that one, makes me feel better. Okay, all right. I know. So human resources clerk, that's salary and admin and benefits included in that, like these numbers?
Total, total benefit package.
Total, total cost for police officers, three hundred and fifty thousand. And that's on top of the three openings that you have right now? Okay. So, you know, I'm just trying to, and that's not funded anyway. Hang on, do we have funded?
So funded is the slide just before that on page sixteen.
Right, so, so you don't have fire, I mean, not fire. We don't have police, extra police funded.
We're actually going for a grant.
Okay.
Safer grant.
Okay.
It diminishes over time. If we get that grant, we'll be back, were you asking for these police officers?
Okay. And that's something that, I think it's critical that we, I'm talking about.
We can't, we can't, we can't budget it and ask for the grant at the same time.
Okay.
Because then it becomes supply.
Right.
Gives us a black eye.
Right.
Can't do both.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why you're not asking for them, I appreciate that.
Well, he, he is asking.
He's asking.
So, I know about the grant.
Okay, right, so, all right, so police officers. And again, we might fill those positions depending on what happens with the.
Safer grant.
And the salary too.
And the what?
And the salary.
Yes.
Negotiations, yeah.
I mean, there's, there's no doubt that he needs the police officer.
Right.
But I would rather spend somebody else's money than to spend our money.
There are three funded positions open.
That's correct.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes, okay. I'm getting there. The, this is just for my, whatever, the park and rec, heavy duty utility vehicles, is that like a gator or something? Like what is that for fifteen grand?
That's a.
Those are R T Vs that we use.
Okay, all right, what?
Kubota. They're about fifteen thousand.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then not included were two extra ones basically. So you, you have three and they're, you're, you're going to trade one in and to get a new one? And the other two are, what's the deal with that?
Thank you. Sorry about that. The two that we're looking to replace because they have so many hours on them that they are going to die soon. So that's what we have, I think, total of three or four in the department. And those two we were looking to replace.
Okay.
How many do we have in the city?
I don't know if, I'd have to ask the fleet manager.
I asked, I'm not going to call it his name, but one of the city employees told me we had eleven, is that correct?
I don't know.
So there's one in the budget for replacement.
Two, when there are two in the budget?
There's, there's one that's approved.
And two that are.
And two that are requested that are not.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, you know, for me, I think about the mid-year looking at.
But those things are so handy, I mean.
Oh, I know.
I, I mean, you see the city workers using, utilizing those all the time, everywhere.
I will tell you, I am seeing an increased amount of golf carts, which are not the same thing, but street legal golf carts up and down Riverside. Like more, more, which I'm kind of okay with, they're, you know, they're doing thirty miles an hour. So anyway, okay. Well, yes, they are. Within acceptable limits, I'm so sure, okay. Um, page twenty. What did I say? So August first, we're going over the other funds. What's, so when you, we're at thirty-two percent right now. At, at almost six million unreserved reserve. Undesignated reserve.
Yes.
Is it thirty-two percent? What are the other funds at and is that a question you're going to be answering in August?
I can absolutely have that information available in August.
Okay. I'm just curious, because I know we were, you know, building up stormwater and, and I realize that those get built up. So that we can do the capital project, it doesn't mean that it's really extra, it's, okay.
So to answer your question on the other funds.
Yep.
The water and sewer fund has an estimated balance of five point six. Which is at forty-nine percent. Again, we're using fund balance in the water and sewer fund because we're holding rates flat. The solid waste fund is currently at one point six million, thirty-six percent is where that one is at. And then stormwater, keeping in mind stormwater is just accumulation for capital projects, so that one always looks skewed. But that one is at two point nine million. Or I'm going to double check that percentage before I say out loud, I think it's. No, that is, that is correct, it's, it, it shows at a hundred and sixty percent. But that's because the operating, the operating portion of the stormwater fund, you're looking at the personnel cost, what have you. The, the stormwater fund encompasses reserves for all the major big capital projects. So the two point nine million balance compared to the one point eight million. the, um, two point nine million balance compared to the, uh, one point eight million operating budget is why that percentage looks skewed.
So those were unas- unassigned?
Yes, sir.
Amounts, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so basically, that's, I mean, that's like nothing, when it's, when you're talking capital project, that's, like, I, you know, I get that, that percentage.
Yep.
Doesn't truly mean that much, okay, um, okay, and, I'm almost done. Fire impact fees, ninety grand, I was like, oh, we could build a fire station. Sorry. I was kidding, um.
Build a fire station?
Yeah. Pickleball, uh, the PNY is a hundred and seventy thousand, do we have working on grants or something to help with that, right, is that an Echo grant, or what is that?
So right now, we're in the middle of preliminary design, I just got something emailed today. So the hundred and seventy thousand before you was just for the design and the permitting? And then when we have the design, we'll go for Echo grants and other types of recreational grants that are out there, we'll work with our grant administrator, and we'll try to leverage those, and remember that Hawks Park is also within the CRA district, and recreational facilities are in our CRA plan, so maybe, hopefully, we could also leverage some CRA dollars as well.
Okay.
For our match.
Okay, that's cool.
Can I ask a?
Yeah, yeah.
Just, since we're on this slide before we move, but the, um, transportation impact fees, just sort of on the record, can you break it down, you know, we kind of hear a lot about like road repaving, those sort of things, how could we apply that?
Okay, so great question, because you're right, the, the public sees this one point six million, um, it's very legally restricted, um, we actually had to, you know, ha- have a study done, set in place for our impact fees, so this is for new roads and expansion, so like if you were adding a turn lane.
Right.
Um, what the paving that we keep reviewing during the budget process is repaving of existing roads.
Yep.
And so you cannot use the impact fees to offset the repaving or repair and maintenance of existing roads, it's strictly for new and expansion.
Right, which is a little bit, it's, it's sort of a catch twenty-two, because normally, if you have somebody coming in that is paying the impact fees into this fund, but you require them to, to put in the turn lane, that's, you know, I don't know if that comes off of their impact fee that they're paying in, because they're building. Yeah, because they're building the turn lane.
Yes.
So, it's, it, it's, impact fees are kind of.
It's, it's not in the federal ga- I was really upset when they were gonna build the, this sidewalk to nowhere, what I call the sidewalk to Oak Hill on both sides of this one, which I do see it used now, but, but, I wanted to pay, you know, use that money for some of our paving, repaving some of our roads, and they said, no, it's earmarked for sidewalks, and it's gotta be used by four sidewalks, you know, so. It, it, you have to go by the federal guidelines and some of that stuff, so.
Sorry, thank you, Christine.
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alright, um, I just thought it was kind of fun that the, so, there's a couple of things, the, there's entryway sign at tenth and US one.
Yes.
For fifty grand, and then the other one is at four forty-two?
Correct, correct, and one is eligible for the CRA funds, where the other is not.
Right, okay, and that's, I just, Gateway Park, just thought I'd bring that up.
Oh, yes, thank you.
The tenth and US one, our little, little pocket park with the sign.
The, yes, that was my goal for how many years?
Ten years ago, yeah, I know, it's all good.
So what are we gonna do with that?
It's still a goal.
Good.
Yep. Um, looking forward to having the debt service on the animal shelter.
Yes.
Finished up, the twenty twenty-six, that's three more years beyond this budget, right?
Yes ma'am.
Um. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see if, anyway, I won't be here. And. Um, I was just looking at the, the outstanding debt service, total governmental debt, the five point one million. That includes the two point seven for the gopher parks.
Yes.
Basically?
Yes.
Okay, so, it's something, you know, to just keep in the back of, and then a couple of things are, um, capital notes, right, the two, um, the vehicle lease, and the fire pumper, that one's gonna be done with. Some of those are shorter term.
Yes ma'am.
Kind of, and they're an actual thing that we're getting, so. I don't know, I don't know what, what I'm trying to say.
The general fund is only servicing about half of that amount.
Yeah.
Yeah, under half of that.
Right, the rest of it is coming from the gopher parks tax.
Yes ma'am.
Being paid for from that, so, it's a little bit of a, it's not.
It's a more scary number than what it is right there.
Yeah, and that's just, that's just government debt, but that's not the whole debt, that rate where it's eighteen million.
Right, so citywide debt is approximately eighteen million.
Which includes, um, the.
Water and sewer, it has, absolutely.
Things that were, right.
Yes ma'am.
That was a twenty-year note on that one.
Yeah, and there was a couple of refinancing over the years, so, I mean, there's a couple of notes for, that we're still paying.
Right, okay, so this was, was that, alright, that's my question.
Thank you, missed anything?
I didn't have a question, Christine's got them all.
She answered a lot of mine, so.
Good.
Miss Dalblow?
I have a question on, um, on page twenty, the paving projects that are going on right now, um, how can we find out where they are? Or what projects are, are happening right now?
Next.
I think that was a list last night. I thought, I thought there was something at the last meeting, there was a.
In the quarterly report, oh.
Yeah, okay, there, I.
But you, and you didn't get that, so.
Yeah.
He's got a list of them.
Okay.
And a, and a future list, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so that's only at six, at six hundred.
There's a future list.
Six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, I thought we had, last year, we had identified, or maybe I'm thinking of the pipelining thing, I keep, I.
Last year, we had like, what was it, like one point one million, I think, for repaving.
I thought so, I thought that's.
That's in the current year.
That's in the current year, yeah, so now we're doing six twenty-eight next year, yeah.
Right, okay, which is, but, and, and actually, that used to be a Brenda question, but it's, we're sort of behind a certain amount, now it's Randy, Randy question.
I have one question, in the parks and recreation, uh, it was one of my goals back, I think it was in my second term, to make Lake Mango a catch and release park, and that we had talked about it, is that a still a goal or not? You know what I'm talking about, Miss Samantha?
I do, and I think it's a long-term goal, the city manager and environmental services director. We have some issues with that particular pond because this, it drops off so steeply.
Right.
That it's not safe to have as a park right now, and so we've had to look at what could we do to mitigate that steep slope, because at the edge, it drops thirty feet.
Right.
And that's not safe, so.
I remember they measured it, they, it's one mile around it.
It is.
And so that would be a good walk and, you know, and put a pole barn out there, and then, they were, they said that they, sometimes they dump some of the overflow water in that, in that lake, so, you couldn't let the people, you know, take the fish home and eat them, you'd, it'd have to be a catch and release park, which I think would be good, um, but I just wondered if that was still.
Yeah, it's long, it's long-range plan, I think, we're talking with the city manager, but right now, we're really trying to focus on our existing parks, you know, we've, because of the recession, and because we sat in the recession for so long.
Right.
A lot of our parks really need some upgrades with their park, um, amenities and playground equipment that, you know, is kind of a critical point where we've got to replace it, so that's really what we're focused on right now.
And for, what aggravates me is, I drive down Mango, and I see somebody sneaking in or fishing, and I wanna fish it so bad.
Um, I, I do have, um, what's the, do we have any further things on the city hall? Like the land purchase, or are there any updates on that, or?
There may be a disappointing update.
Uh-oh.
Then I'm not able to share it this time.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Wow, that's even worse than sharing.
I know.
Well, I was asked.
Not to, that's fine.
Understand that.
Yeah.
Shouldn't have asked.
Debbie, did you still have?
I'm sorry.
No, I think, I think.
I was thinking about it.
You're good.
Nothing mentioned.
Anybody else? Are, are we leaning toward a millage rate?
I think we should be, because we, uh, I know how negotiations go.
Oh, okay.
Well, we'll only have, so we're doing.
We'll only have police by next week, but.
Right.
That should give us an idea.
Right, and we're setting maximum anyway. So.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good thing to keep in mind, that we, you know, a maximum might be set, but that doesn't mean a reduction.
Right.
And then take place.
Yeah, we can do that.
Good point, good point, good point.
Cause it's an act of God to go above if we put it too low.
Yeah, no, I don't feel bad.
Yeah, no, no, that ain't, that ain't happening. Anybody else? Got anything else, Mr. Irving?
No, sir. Well, I, I, yeah, and I will just say, you know, I think next week will be interesting, I think as we go through union negotiations, that'll be interesting, because the whole time, as we've been looking at this fire assessment, we've kind of been saying the whole time, you know, that zero, we've been looking at that, you know, reducing that, so, I'm not very comfortable moving forward without being able to do that, so, but, um, but anyway, so, that's all, yeah.
Well, just stress again that by setting the millage rate.
No, correct.
At six point nine, or whatever.
Seven.
Seven, excuse me, I don't wanna give everybody a heart attack, it's not locked in at that.
No, correct, I understand that, I'm just.
But we, I want the, the people that, if they're watching, to realize that, because they may hear this and say, oh, they're not re- they're, they're, you know, they're not lowering the tax, they're not doing anything, but it's just to set the millage so that we can do something with it, if we want to, correct?
Yes, so that is just what will be advertised on the truth and millage or trim notice that goes out, um, that way, it gives all of the property, um, taxpayers within the city, an opportunity to show up for our public meetings, um, and voice, you know, their opinions as well, and we also, again, as we go through and fine tune after union negotiations, um, and bring before you a balanced budget again, you know, August, September timeframe.
There's something else I'd like to suggest, um, after the, um, August twenty-fourth, or for the August twenty-fourth, uh, kind of budget workshop, the twenty-third is the primary, so, I think we should put out there, whoever moves forward from the primaries, uh, to the general election, be invited, that way they can also ask questions, because one of them will be up, up here sitting.
So.
That we could, um.
For, for all the candidates that are running for the city of Edgewater?
Uh, yes, for the city of Edgewater, for, um, like the mayor and, and district, uh, one and three.
But the budget and everything would be adopted prior to the election.
But, uh, tw- okay, yes, what I was saying is, uh, the twenty-third is the primary, on the tw- so, at the primary, by the twenty-fourth, we'll know who the two candidates will be going forward, so we should make sure we have an invitation out to the two candidates who go to the general election, invite them to come, so that way they can be part of the process and understand before they get in.
They'll be, they'll be invited, just like, okay.
Well, yeah, they should, they're on here.
Yeah, they, they'll get noticed, and if they're interested, they'll show up.
Right.
Gotcha.
Now, I noticed something, there's gonna, there's gonna be a meet and greet here Thursday night for all the candidates, is that correct?
Fourth of August, sorry.
Is that correct?
What does that do?
August fourth.
August fourth.
Is here, yeah.
Oh, okay. Not this, it's not this Thursday. Not this Thursday.
No, no, no.
Okay.
That's being sponsored by the Chamber, correct?
Yes. Nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn. Thought we'd be here.
Thank you, guys.